We have a lot of employee service pins to hand out today because we've got a full crowd in there. Glad everybody's here. Mr. Raycock.
Let's all bow our heads, please. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for today. Thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for giving us the opportunity as Commissioners of Wayne County to conduct the business of Wayne County and provide services to the citizens of Wayne County. We also ask that you be with the families of the victims of the tragedy in Florida. Be with their families and give them comfort. We don't understand why things like this happen, but they do, and we just ask that you be with those families. Also, be with our men and women in uniform. Be with our service personnel that are deployed. We pray that you keep them out of harm's way. Also, we'd like to ask you to be with our first responders, our law enforcement, EMS, fire, all of our first responders. They sacrifice so much for us each day in providing protection for us. They train, and they never know when they will be in the same situation that the first responders in Florida are in. And when they are on scenes like that, it affects them more than just being first responders. They're human also. And also, we ask that you just continue to help our leaders in Raleigh conduct business for the betterment of the state and also in Washington. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Raycock. Has anyone had the opportunity to review the minutes? Are there any changes? All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion on the floors. Any discussion? All is a favor, raise your right hand. Adjustment of the agenda, Mr. Henning.
Yes, sir. We do have a couple of changes. Number one, under new business, we have decided to pull number two. And then we are also adding a change to personnel policy that we talked about in the pre-agenda session. And that would be, I guess, the new number three.
Okay. Are there any other changes from the Commissioners? No, I've been entertaining a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Motion on the floors. Any discussion? All is a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay. Now, we're right on time. Now, I guess we'll do the employee pins first. I think we all need to come down.
All right, we're ready. We'll begin with the first-year pins. Chastity Autry, Register of Deeds. Angela Floyd, DSS, Regular Services. Kelly Hankins, DSS, Income Maintenance. Shelton Henson, Facilities. Stacy Henson, Emergency Medical Services. Braxton Hood, Emergency Medical Services. Karen Peel, DSS, Income Maintenance. Karina Rodriguez, DSS, Child Support. Carrie Boland, DSS, Administration. Celita Graham, Health, Maternity Care. Tamara or Tamara Johnson, DSS, Income Maintenance. Lady M. Salinas, Health, WIC Program. Jerry Snow, DSS, Regular Services. Christina Atkinson, Sheriff's Office. All right, and that concludes our one-year, sir. All right, now we'll do our five-year. Joshua Smith, Emergency Medical Services. Benjamin Smith, Sheriff's Department. Jeremiah Goodson, Emergency Medical Services. Ashton Cooper, Health Department, WIC Program. And Mr. Robert Thaxton with the jail. Catherine King. I know I said Ann, but there is one more. I'm sorry. Catherine King, DSS, Administration. All right, that's it for the five-year. And now we'll move on to the 10-year pins, starting with Gail Stroud with Solid Waste. Cecil Clayton Swinson with the jail. Melissa Price, DSS, Income Maintenance. Sue Peacock, Health Department, Maternity Care. Alfred Mohizer with the Sheriff's Department. I may not have said that right. I'm sorry. How am I supposed to say it? Mohizer. So sorry. You could have told me that. Lonis Blackman, Sheriff's Department. AKA Honey Bun.
Honey Bun.
Okay, that's it for the 10. Now we'll move on to the 15-year. Beginning with Russell Rice with the Sheriff's Department. Michael Sean Biggins with the Sheriff's Department. All right, and that concludes our 15-year pins. We have one 20-year pin. And that's for Richard Blizzard with the Sheriff's Department. We have two 25-year pins. And today we had... No, I get those back when you're done. Thank you. And we have one 30-year pin today for Lois A. Smith, DSS, Income Maintenance.
Let's go ahead and move on to public comments. The public comment section is open. If anyone has anything to say, please come up, give us your name and address and phone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Sylvia Barnes, and I live at 1708 Laurel Street here in the city of Ghostboro. And I am here this morning because I have a concern about a phone call and some information on the Facebook that I received yesterday afternoon. I was driving home from a meeting in Raleigh, and I received a call from a concerned citizen and asked me if the NAACP knew what was going on out to the Eastern Wayne School. And I told her that I didn't, and she asked me was on Facebook, and I said yes. So she asked me if I could read what had been posted on the Facebook page from a concerned, one of the fathers out there. And I pulled over and looked at the Facebook, and it was quite disturbing what was on that Facebook page, especially the part that read, "Let me find out there is some racism going on in my children's school at Eastern Wayne High School with the teachers and staff." Now, I was concerned about that word "if" because it did not give any other indication about what would be done or if anything would be done. So on my way in, I went out to Eastern Wayne High School, and I spoke with the assistant principal and the principal. And she explained to me that a post had been put on Facebook about a Spirit Week, which some people celebrate as a part of the Black History Month, but that was not what was going on at Eastern Wayne High School. And so she had called some of the students in, and they had wraps around their heads. Some of the girls had come to school that morning with wraps. And we know that that's not a part of our school system, that children are not allowed to wear hats or wraps or bandanas, scarves, or anything. So she asked them to remove them. One of the young ladies could not take hers off. So her father was en route out there to get her. And when he got there, he wrote, "My daughter was sent home because of a head wrap, but when I show up to pick her up, there are multiple students with different stuff on their heads, which goes against the school policy. People putting cotton on lockers, all kinds of stuff. Let me find out if you have a student at Eastern Wayne High School. Talk to your child today and see what's been going on." When I get there, there had already been a couple of fights, and students had been sent home. The principal told me that there had been no fights in her school and that nobody had been sent home during the day. Yesterday and last night, I continued to receive calls about the concerns that other parents have about the activities that are going on there. There are posters put up, derocaturer posters about racism and segregation. There's a big thing across the hallway saying, reading like the Underground Railroad. There is cotton on some of the students' lockers. There are messages about slavery. You better be glad that you are living now and not in slavery. I'm really concerned about that, and I think as a community, as a county, we need to make sure that our children are safe. And I know that there is something that we can do that will ensure that our children are not in situations like in Florida, even in Raleigh and Durham and some of the other situations. So that's why I come to you this morning, asking as the elected officials, as part of the elected officials in our county, that we make sure that our students are in a safe environment in our school system. I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Anyone else? All right, then I will close the public comment section. Thank you very much. Moving on to the appointment committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We met this morning, and we'd like to recommend the reappointment of Angela Wilson to the Wayne County Community Child Fatality Prevention Team. I put this form of motion.
We have a motion on the floors. Any discussion? All right, all is a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
That concludes...
Okay. Unfinished business, and we discussed this pretty much at length in the opening session. Does anybody else have any questions about that discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion on the floor. No discussion. All is a favor, please raise your right hand. And again, with the consent agenda the same, we discussed it at length. Is there any more discussion about the consent agenda?
Remove adoption of the consent agenda.
Got a motion on the floors. Any additional discussion? All is a favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. And now we're going to have, going to new business. I think we have Michelle here, Michelle Hill here. Just a tongue tire there, on our wellness program. Thank you for coming this morning.
Welcome. Good morning. Thank you for the appearance.
You've got the whole team with you, I see.
I do. I am employed through Wayne Memorial Hospital. As you know, we're contracted out from Wayne County to be a wellness nurse for the employees. I am here to report what we've done since we started back in July. So an employee wellness nurse, I'm here to promote optimal health by bringing awareness of all health issues that face us today. There's the advantages of having a wellness nurse is having an on-site professional where the employees can reach out to me. I have several employees that come out throughout the day to check blood pressures or just have medical questions. I'm moving on. So what we've done in January and July, when we started in 2017, we started out with the biometric screenings. This allowed us to be able to give hands-on contact with the employees and also establish a baseline to see where the needs were for the employees as far as health-wise. We then moved on and did a, initiated a wellness program for some of the employees that were having abnormal lab values. We kind of get them back on schedule, talk about nutrition, talk about exercise with that. We moved on in September to have our, promote our flu vaccines. Our wellness program continued on with the employees. We, in October, we started to give flu vaccines and started following up with diet and exercise and seeing how the employees were responding. And we'll move to December. In December, we initiated a wellness counts program where the employees were able to be given a calendar, and they can just choose four days of doing something that would be healthy, whether it be walking for five minutes or eliminating all refined sugars. We had a great response in that. We also talked a little bit, taught some classes with holiday stress and depression. In January, we created a wellness committee of seven members at this time. We meet once a month. Going back to the biometric screenings, what this did is it allowed us to get a baseline, but I want to talk a little bit about these numbers up here. 179 employees participated in the biometric screenings. Eighty-nine of those employees completed the survey. Out of those that completed the survey, I contacted, well, participated in the program, I contacted 36 of those that had abnormal values that may need a little bit more guidance. Twenty-seven of them came, and we sat one-on-one, and we talked a little bit about nutrition, what they can do, how they can alter their lifestyles, exercising, and following up with a primary care doctor. Nineteen of those joined our wellness program. We had good results with the ones that did enjoy our wellness program, and I'll go into that a little bit more, but that was a great thing. So one of the things that we did see in the biometric screens is 86 percent, when we got the results back, 86 percent people were overweight. Seventy-three percent were at poor risk of health, poor health risk because of their intake of less fruits and vegetables. And 55 percent had increased cholesterol levels, and 47 percent of them, high blood So that's why we implemented these programs, to focus target on those issues. Total contacts. We did 294 flu vaccines this year. We're in the process now of doing what we call PPDs, where our skin testing, PPD. These are for EMS and Wayne Net personnel. 105 of those. I've actually had contact with 800, over 800 employees, one-on-one. Blood pressures, we did 252. I did 40 medical doctor referrals, and we had two that came to my office to talk to me about little mental issues. So I referred them to our Employee Assistance Program. So we talked a little bit about the numbers. The cardio checks, which is part of the biometric screenings we did, we first came on board in July, we did 179 of those. We charged $20 per test. That came out at a little over $3,500. To break it down, to kind of understand, if an employee had did this on their own and went to a doctor, they would have to pay a doctor's office visit. The going doctor's office visit now is $130, $130. To do a lipid panel, we would have to take the blood, send it to the lab, and of course you'd get that fee there, and that's about $160. And that's about $160. If an employee did this while they're working on a lower median range of salary, we chose $15 an hour. So that brings that up to a total of $305. If we multiply that by 179 employees that participated, it will be well over $5,400. That gives Wayne County a savings of $51,000. Flu vaccines, talk a little bit about that. This year, we charged $23 per employee for flu vaccines. We did 294. The cost was 67, a little over 6,700. If the employee had gone out on their own, I did not include an office visit in this because they could have easily gone to CVS or Walmart. They would have paid about $45 a flu shot, plus they may have would have missed an hour of work. So if you take the $60 that you get from the 45 and the 15, you multiply it by 294, it would have cost over $17,000. The TB skin testing that we're doing now with EMS, generally they go every year to immediate care to have this service done. Usually means an hour off of work to get your skin test read, I mean, put in, and then you'll have to come back and 48, 72 hours later to have it read. So that's another hour of time wasted. By having an on-site nurse to be able to administer this, we can charge it at $5 per injection. So 105 employees, to receive the skin testing, comes out for a cost of $525. If they had have gone off-site to have this done, it equaled about $60, and we did 105, it would have been well over $6,000. So that's 5,700 dollars saved to the county. If we look at blood pressures, generally when you go get a blood pressure, you have to have a doctor's appointment, and so you'll have to have your office visit fee. Also included an hour's salary. But when you think realistically, when you go to the doctor, are you in and out with an hour? But I just use one, one hour's salary. So that would equal up to $145. And if you multiply that by the blood pressures I've done, which is 252, that's well over $36,000. This is at no cost to Wayne County because I am here on site. If you go to the next slide, it kind of breaks it down for you. With the cardio checks, again, with the biometrics, off-site meaning to the doctor's office, that's what your first column looks like, with the totals of well over $115,000. By having a nurse on-site, the current cost is a little over $10,000. With the potential savings for Wayne County to have over $104,000. I know this program is working. I see positive actions daily. These are just a few. When you have one-on-one sessions with these employees and they listen to you and they call you and they want that advice, you give it to them and then you see them actually perform it. I can sit in my office and see employees walking during lunch that I had talked to. We held a wellness program at Dudley Lantio. There was about 10 participants for about a month. I went out there every two weeks and we talked about health and nutrition. Some had issues with hypertension, some with diabetes. Their focus was, at that time, was to lose weight. And we lost a total of 21.5 pounds. I had another employee after going through the biometric screening, we picked up on some things that they weren't aware of. So after counseling and meeting with his primary care doctor, we were able to lose nine and a half pounds. My plans for the overview for 2018, in March, we're going to start a new wellness program. It's called, "Is Your Future Be There?" And what we'll do in this, I've teamed up with Michelle Estrada from the extension office, also with Go Wayne Go with Wayne Memorial. We're coming up with a nutrition, we'll be giving recipes as long as sampling the recipes. This will all be done at the Maxwell Center. I will tie in with the nutrition part with the health part. As example, if we're going to do fish tacos one day, well, fish have omega-3, so we're going to explain how the omega-3s actually help the heart. And then we're going to follow it up with fitness instructors to give tips out. Some of the things I noticed when I would make my site visits around here, a lot of people sit at their desk, day in and day out, and they don't get out. And some would actually sit in their, sit at their desks to have lunch. That's eight hours. More than that, if that's their lunch hour added to it. So the fitness instructors are going to help create desk or sizes, or ideas to get them up moving. In August and September, we're going to start promoting the biometric screenings because I feel like if the employees understand why we're testing, what we're testing for, they'll be more compliant and willing to do it. So I think we can get these numbers up higher. And the surveys will get higher as well by reducing some of the questions. We need to put in more concentrated questions and not just fluff questions. And then in October, we'll resume that with the flu shots. And in November and December, we'll follow up with the one-on-one counseling. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions, commissioners?
Comments? A lot of good calls, I think.
That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have one question.
Sure.
How effective is the flu shot? I didn't get the flu shot and I got the flu. Carol got the flu shot and she got the flu. So how effective is the flu shot?
Well, you know, some people tend to look at the flu and they think it's like one influenza virus. There's actually multiple influenza viruses. If you're vaccinated with the influenza viruses that we protect you with, and this year we provided four, quadervalent ones. If you come in contact with that virus, I believe it's about, from what I've read, about 40, well, 40, 60% coverage in protection. But it doesn't mean you won't come in contact with another virus that you didn't get covered for. The CDC is the ones that give the guidelines for each year which ones to inoculate with. But as a nurse perspective, you know, 40, 60% doesn't sound like 100%, but it does lessen your symptoms to it and shortens the duration of it.
So even if you get the flu, it shortens the duration.
Shortens the suffering.
It shortens the suffering.
Right, it shortens the suffering.
One of the things I would like to see us do, and that is make flu shots more affordable for our employees, you know.
Zero.
There's zero.
It's covered under the insurance.
So I thought on here it said that you charge $23. So you are charging employees?
The county.
So employees, it's free. All right, sounds cool.
I didn't realize you were doing labs down there where you're taking, drawing blood.
I'm sorry?
You're drawing blood down there. I'm sorry, I got a piss candy in my mouth because I was coughing.
No, we don't draw blood with the biometric screens. It's just a little pin prick of the finger.
Oh, okay.
That's just enough that we need to get our results. It's immediate results as well. They have it within less than five minutes.
I was wondering, because I thought you'd need to be in a different setting than you are to actually be drawing blood.
But just to let you know less of more, you know, this was really a pilot project this year for us, and, but I think we're seeing a lot of benefits from it. So, you know, if there's a head nod, we will continue budgeting for that in the 18, 19 year as well. So I think there's a lot of, you know, Michelle's done a great job, and I was right next to her for about six months and saw the people come in and out on a daily basis. And people actually trust Michelle. And if Michelle says you need to go see the doctor, they're going to go see the doctor. And so she's been a great asset to us, and it's one of those things I think we can build upon after this first year as well and do hopefully a lot of really cool things.
Seems like it was two years ago when you were chairman, we saw the vast rise in health costs as much, we got very interested in this, and I'm glad to see this paying out dividends.
And I think you'll be able to see, once we meet with Mark III, our insurance costs, I think there's going to be a direct correlation of, you know, this as well.
It's good, I appreciate it, the hospital as well.
Right.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on. I guess we're skipping that one. We're motioning about resolution for the 21st Amendment. We talked about that earlier.
If any questions, I'll be glad to answer if you want me to.
Any more questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion on the floor. Any additional discussion? All who are in favor, please raise your right hand. And moving to the next resolution, which we talked about at length.
2018-6.
Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Motion on the floor. Any additional discussion? All who are in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. And county manager comments?
Just want to remind the board of our joint meeting tomorrow with the school board. Kevin Leonard with the county association will be here and do his presentation on school funding, and it really is a very good presentation. The other thing that I want to mention is the Maxwell Center. We are at full staff, and we had two people start yesterday. We'll have another person start on Monday. We're gearing up for it. James has absolutely done a yeoman's work as far as, I hope you, the list and everything else, invitations and the furniture and all this, trying to get us ready for March 1. So we're really excited about the opening and the work that's being done out at the Maxwell Center. So make sure you get your black towel and look nice and sharp, and we'll be ready for the grand open.
I know Noel's watching. Do we have our furniture?
The furniture is, we, I will, I'm very proud of Noel and James as well. The furniture will be here. So they did an absolute great job on ensuring that occurred. But it is coming together. It's one of those things that, you know, very stressful, but it is coming together. And I appreciate the work of all staff getting us to this point. So, but that's all I have at this point.
Okay. Mr. Bailey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I had two committee meetings this last week, one with the Latino council, and they are getting ready to have a, I want to say, a program next month. I don't have the exact date, but it will be out soon. And they would like to see all the commissioners come over and participate with them on that situation, to see what they're doing. What they're doing, they are educating the Latino community about what's going on in the county, which I think is a great deal for them. You know, a lot of them does not speak English, so they are able to get with the Latinos and the council and get the information where the landfill is located and such as the health department, social services, and all those kind of things. I also met with the wages, and I found out that wages have been appointed to take care of the weatherization of Pitt County. You know, that's what they do now. They don't have each county, you know, doing their own. They set up certain counties that come under the wages department here. And the reason they did that is wages have a record that is outstanding. And so they're going to give them the money to provide, to pay for the weatherization of Pitt County. So that's all I have.
Mr. Raycock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Didn't attend a whole lot of stuff. A lot of what we do attend, you know, is just the fact that we need to be there. But two things, I did attend the groundbreaking for the JC46's out at Seymour. Had a good turnout, a strong win. And, but it was, I was honored to be there. And also, the next day, we had the base community council, and it was also on base. And I had a good turnout for that. And I feel like that, you know, all we can do to support, not only the base, but mainly support the personnel out there, because, you know, those young men and women are doing a fantastic job in protecting us, you know. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dobbin?
Changing it up.
Changing it up. I don't want to jump ahead of tomorrow, but I was somewhat concerned to see an article that was in the paper regarding, and we're going to discuss this more tomorrow, I think. But I just want to remind the board that we have an agreement with the school board that they, as such, are going to find the most efficient use of facilities. We all know that even with the new legislation, we are going to have to have the classrooms necessary to reduce class sizes. And the only effective way to do that is to make sure that we're using our existing facilities as efficiently as possible. And in that was some small adjustments to lines, district lines. It does not make sense that if you've got vacant classrooms in one district and you've got overcrowding in the other district, rather than just going and building additional classrooms in that overcrowded district, you simply move the line a bit to have an equal distribution of children. And this is done in every county in the United States, every county. But for some reason, here in Wayne County, there seems to be resistance to that. We need to ask staff to do some research like they do in most counties and make sure that we are effectively using. And I'm hoping that tomorrow, that there will be an understanding of the two boards and we don't get into a fighting contest or a spitting contest, but that we recognize that is our responsibility as leaders in this community to make sure that we are effectively using facilities. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Intense fellowship, Mr. [inaudible].
Intense fellowship. It may be intense tomorrow.
Mr. Kamari?
Since our last board meeting, of course, we, I think all of us, or just about all of us, were out at Seymour to the community meeting and found it very interesting what the military had to share with us. On last Wednesday, I attended the Board of Health meeting. And just to bring you up to speed and, and I think probably to advocate for something to be done, at a previous, recent previous meeting, one of the air conditioning fans was, modus was just raising, all kind of saying, and it was very noticeable. And I assured them that I would bring that back. Last week, about every 15, 20 seconds or maybe every minute, the lights would go off and they would have to go, and the wall would switch them back on. There needs to be something done. And they, and Mr. Manager, I know that they are making assessments now as to whether it's a repair or replace. But as a, as a sitting commission member, I think that's probably what our job is when we are out, going to our committee meetings, when we see something, say something. And so I would be unfair to the Board of Health if I did not, I would be unfair if I didn't say something because... I didn't say something because I'm sure if the lights were going off in the room that we were in, they were probably going off someplace else. And when power interrupts, and I'm not a computer person, but, you know, probably lose some data and so forth and so on. So, and Mr. Gerley, I appreciate something that you did a month or so ago. You asked for and had provided us the whole list of needs slash wants. And I, I think this is worth saying to the, to our population. We are, we are under a lot of pressure to provide resources to correct problems that's out there. And I will not add anything to what Mr. Doherty said, but it is incumbent upon us to try to spend our dollars as judiciously as we can. And I think probably we all sitting at this table up here know that there are different fun opportunities out in the community. And there are some wants and then there are some hardcore needs. And so we're going to have to make some real choices and decisions. But hopefully we can arrive at a place where all the departments that we fund can understand that we can't fund everything.
Well, and if I could just talk, just right, because, you know, we had our party goal meeting and, and we approved the goals at our last meeting. One thing that I have done with that list, that we've sent that list out to department heads and I basically as absence to say, how can you help us meet the goals of the Board of Commissioners? So we are working on that directly. Already had a meeting with our OES director, we taught paramedicine. So there's a lot of different things that, that we are doing. But, but again, those goals that you did set are not just sitting there on the shelf. So wanted to throw that in as well.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, I also attended the base community council meeting, which is always good to see the county and the base and the city working together. Also attended NC East Alliance. As the board is aware, this is our last year of free membership in NC East Alliance. And we're going to have to decide what we're going to do in the future. Also had a library committee meeting. Look, the Wayne County Library is really, really busy. They've got a lot of programs going on. Go on the website and look at the events that's happening. They've got it going on. And, and this is the first time I've been on the library board, I believe, but it's amazing what the library out here in Wayne County is doing. I wanted to take the, the balance of my time as the chairman to address, you know, our hearts, our hearts are burdened and our prayers go out to victims of this week's and families of this week's Florida school shooting. And, you know, students, I've been, I've been an apprentice instructor and I've been, had an apprenticeship program for forty years. And I can tell you inside the classroom and in the shop, and I can tell you that students cannot concentrate when they don't feel safe. And teachers cannot teach effectively if they don't feel safe. Ahead of the, ahead of the joint meeting tomorrow, I just want to bring this up because I think it does need to be brought up, that the Wayne County Board of Education and the Wayne County Board of Commissioners need to address school safety issue here in Wayne County as soon as possible. We've talked about more school security personnel. We've talked about cameras. We've talked about metal detectors along with many other suggestions, but we haven't done anything yet. Look around the county, if you will, and see what private industry and businesses have done in Wayne County. We have put up fences. We've put up electronic gates. We've done these things. I'm not saying that's what we need to go with the schools. What I'm saying is, is that over the last five years, how, have you noticed what I've noticed? That these shootings that we're experiencing become less and less, we are accepting that as a society as being normal to a certain degree. We need to address this issue before we are one of the victims. I want to ask the question, is it time for us to be more concerned about school safety rather than the classroom size? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gerley?
Mr. Chairman, I think most committees been covered pretty well by, would like to say, I look forward to meeting with the school board tomorrow and I'm sure it'll be productive. Thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes, before you go. I would, I forgot to mention, February is American Health Month and Wayne UNC is really supporting and got a campaign to, you know, to help work on heart disease. In fact, heart disease is the number two cause of death in Wayne County. And to support the efforts of Wayne UNC on, on heart disease, they've asked, what nationwide is, for us to wear red to honor National Heart Month. So I've got my red on today and I get with Janie at the hospital, pick up my work, royalty check for putting this plug in for. But thank y'all.
Yeah, I'm on her board and I, and we talked about the other day, I said, I don't own any reds.
Yeah. I'll give a blue shirt.
What's that?
I'll give a blue shirt.
I think I'll pass on that. I bleed purple. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman? If I could beg you indulge just a moment, I, I think I was reluctant to say anything about the Florida shooting. And thank you, Mr. Mayo, for bringing it up. We, we want to skirt the issue because so many folk feel like it's too sensitive to bring up. But we need to, we can put out electronic fences that we want and gates and so forth and so on. But until we selectively, as a nation, decide that we need to do something about high-powered weapons in the hands of folk who we love to say is always deranged, and I'm not saying they're not, but we don't want anyone shooting anyone with a twenty-two pistol. But if you walk, someone walk in with an AK-15 and those slugs look like that, I believe, it's going to tear up some people. I, I listened to those children describe how people were on top of them bleeding out, faces were blown off. We need to, as a nation, Mr. Mayo and all of us sitting here, we need to take stronger positions about the opportunity for high-powered weapons to be used on our children. We pray that nothing like that happens in Wayne County. And, and I probably, I think one of the reasons I was reluctant to say anything about it related to the schools, right this minute, ninety percent of my family is somewhere in a school building in Wayne County. Children and adults in my family, I think I'm, I and my sister are the only ones that's not actively inside of a school building today. And so ninety percent of my family could stand a chance to be harmed. They could get harmed as they're walking down any street, and I know that. But we're talking about the schools right now. And I would ask that you contact whomever your favorite representative is and let's do something that can directly alter whether or not someone gets shot or killed by a high-powered weapon that almost gives no one an opportunity to survive. And just to put one last caveat on this, Ms. Sylvia mentioned problem that she intercepted on, on, on social media about potential. And I listen, try to listen very close because it, it may not be anything. It may not be, it might be, a lot might be, you know, we don't know, we're not out in school buildings. But we need to discourage folk from saying or doing things to someone else that will cause upheaval. I, I just need, I thought just to add that to it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Before I speak, I think your chair wanted to step up for a minute.
Might just bring you up to speed on the situation in Wayne County relating to school security since the shooting in Florida. We have doubled up on our deputies' presence in the schools. We are actually brought in part-time and off-duty deputies this morning. And as of yesterday, we ran down a number of social media, they were either threats or potential threats of violence that our investigators and our deputies ran down yesterday. Nothing credible was confirmed, but we did run down every lead that we were given. We asked the media if they hear anything. We asked the public if they hear anything through social media, let us know. We will run it down. We will actively pursue anyone that makes a threat against the school and make charges if that, if that is appropriate. And so we are looking into all threats or potential threats. And I had met with Dr. Dunsmore yesterday along with his staff and we have come up with a plan to do some things to hopefully secure our schools a little better with personnel.
I appreciate you taking a proactive stance. I really do.
I need to ask.
Yes, sure.
We, we don't have anybody thinking about arming the school teachers here in Wayne County, do we?
That has not been discussed with me at this time.
The reason I pose that question, because I know what law enforcement is going to do if they run into a school and somebody run out with a gun in their hand, they're going to shoot them. And they don't have time to think about whether or not it's a teacher or somebody, you know, so that's, that's a big mistake, kind of arming school teachers.
That has not been discussed with me at this time. And of course, if that was a discussion, we would need to look into a lot of the parameters on that.
Yeah, right.
Yes, sir.
Just a comment. Thank you, Sheriff, for updating us on that.
Yes, sir.
And I agree with, I agree with Commissioner Kamari about the total picture, but my point is, is that we need, until all that happens on the federal level, we need to protect the schools on the scene. We need to, we need to protect the campus because it could take years and decades for anything to happen from congressional level. We are responsible for the safety of the students in all of our schools and public places. And so I, I look at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. I know that they are a different animal, but look, look at the security they have. Look at the security we have here at the jail. Then compare it to all of our school campuses across this county and we got a lot to do. That's all I'm saying. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. And I will ask the public while I'm speaking if there is a social media threat of some type, rather than reposting and sort of adding to it, if you'll just go ahead and call us as law enforcement officers or call the school system and let us know whether it is. We had a lot that blew up from one post that went to a number of repostings. And I don't do, I don't do Facebook, so I don't know a whole lot about what I'm talking about. But I know some of it got blown out of proportion because of the reposting and everything.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. I know that yesterday when I found out about the postings on Facebook, we were trying to keep it down before I could even get out of the room, it was already on, it was already out on social media about the way they're taking place. And I thought that's what Ms. Morris was going to allude to when she was talking this morning. Our hearts go out to those people. I truly believe it goes back to home life because these people who are doing these things typically are coming from broken homes and, and it just goes, talks about our society today. Because guns have been around for a long, long time and people didn't go in and shoot nut places like that. Anyway, you talked about NC East and our, our contract working with them. Last week, John Chapek came down and talked to us at WCDAs, gave us a good presentation. And we're certainly considering that as well as the other. The other, the other boards I attended as well, so I won't even talk about that. That's really all I have. Is there anything else that needs to come up before we go back into closed session?
Reminder of our two o'clock facilities.
Oh, we have our two o'clock facilities. Yeah, we do. Oh, and there was another thing I was going to say. You couldn't say it any better. I want to work tomorrow very closely with our, our school board. We're working with our legislative delegation. They've already found some solution. We still have the low, the low-well thing in front of us and I hope tomorrow's meeting will be productive and we can figure out how together we'll solve this problem and have an efficient school system and one that's not so expensive. Because we've made some pretty big decisions here in the last few years and committed a lot of dollars that involves some moving of some lines. And I think we need to talk that out tomorrow. But having said that, is there a motion to go back into closed session for the same reasons you quoted earlier unless you need to add more to it?
Just going to add one more.
Okay.
Is the discussion of qualifications of employment for an individual.
Is there a motion to go closed session? I'll just laborate your hand.